All right, let's go ahead and get started. Welcome, everyone. Appreciate you coming out tonight for the town council meeting. If we can please call the roll.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Present.
Councilmember Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Excellent, thank you. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Once again, really appreciate everybody coming out this evening. With the indulgence of the council, I'd like to do a couple of quick introductions first outside the normal flow of our meetings. First of all, I'd like to invite the SEACs to come on up and talk about the 5K and the program that's going on here coming up on April 1st.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor and council members. We are less than 30 days away from our fifth annual, annual unity and diversity 5K run slash walk. We have 300 runners and nearly 200 volunteers and expect numbers to grow as we get closer. Please reach out to friends and family to sign up and support our event. On a separate note, we are holding a fundraiser on March 15th at Texas Roadhouse in Miramar. Please go out with your friends and family to help raise money for our event. Make sure to mention SYA at checkout to donate to the cause. Once again, we are exactly 23 days away from race day and are super excited. There will be games, food, and music for you to enjoy with your friends. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Naoki Takahashi. I'm here on behalf of Misam Vida, which is, you know, working alongside them.
Great, thank you.
I've been there for about eight years now, since I've started, like, since I was in high school. And recently, my, with the help of my fiance, which I met, I believe, last week, we've been trying to do more outreach, and so this is one of the first events that we'll be doing with them. And so we'll be working alongside the SEAC Youth Association and Heartway Church. I just want to share a little bit about, you know, the church.
Perfect, thank you.
And, you know, what this means to us. So, Misam Vida is a Spanish-speaking church consisting of people from many different, like, Latin American countries, usually, like Venezuela, Colombia is, like, our biggest, kind of, like, majority there. And they were all just brought together, you know, in this community where there isn't that many Spanish speakers. So even though I don't speak the language very well, I don't speak Spanish natively, they definitely, you know, opened their arms and accepted me as part of the family. And there's so much love there, and I appreciate everything they've done for me there. And one of the, like, like, Misam Vida's motto is "Restorados para restaurar," which means they aim to be restored in order to restore others. That means, you know, not just people inside the church, but outside the church as well. With this in mind, like, Misam Vida, you know, believe that Jesus walked hand, hand-in-hand with people of all different colors, different backgrounds, all that stuff, all different beliefs, which is why we believe that having this, you know, being a part of this 5K, you know, is just another way to, like, reach out, support a community in a new way, you know, that they've been doing the past couple of years. And just work towards this common goal of celebrating different ethnicities, different communities, you know, and separate, and, you know, celebrating the differences between all of us.
Awesome, awesome. Well, thank you. Appreciate the collaboration there, and it does say a lot for our community and a great example for our world, frankly. So, thank you. Appreciate it. The second guest we've got here, I don't think Mary was planning on coming up and saying anything, but I'm going to introduce her anyway. Mary Malinoff-McPhee, she's a commissioner in the town of Weston, and she's a great friend to the town of Southwest Ranches. Mary, it's fantastic to have you here this evening. Thank you for coming by. Thank you. All right, now, let's jump into our normal agenda and our first presentation. Andy, you want to give an introduction here?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Tonight's presentation actually came at request of Councilmember Hartman, a conversation that he and I had last fall, or into the winter. We thought it would be good to get the code process, how things work, and in, in front of the council and in front of the public, just to increase transparency, to increase people's knowledge with how that works. So, you know, in light of recent events, some other things, I've kind of been thinking about this, and it goes, I think about the rural workshop that we did in January, and we learned that people have different versions on what's rural, and we learned that people have very different versions on what code enforcement should be. So, you know, Julio's got a presentation that he's gonna, he's gonna do for you tonight. I can tell you that, that code enforcement may be the most difficult function that, that we do in town. You make nobody happy in the process. It's very difficult, but Julio and his staff do well with it, and I just want to turn it over to him to, to give that presentation. Thank you.
Perfect, good. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, all of council. This evening, as Andy mentioned, I think it would be a good idea to explain the entire code process, so for that reason, I prepared this presentation. First off, I'd like to explain what the objectives are for our department. Essentially, the function of code enforcement is to secure the health, safety, welfare of the residents by enforcing the town's code. This helps to maintain property values, and in the way we do that is always by seeking voluntary compliance. You know, there's this misconception that the goal of code enforcement is to be punitive, to be revenue generating for the town, and that's completely false. Code enforcement primary goal is always to seek voluntary compliance. Now, there are cases where people don't comply, and as a last resort, we do impose penalties in order to, you know, try and gain compliance by having a punitive measure in place. Now, our department consists of myself as the code enforcement director, my assistant code enforcement director, Manfred Valetz, our code enforcement officer, Concepcion Campos, and last but not least, our administrative coordinator, Jenna Ina Anderson, or as she is commonly known to most people in town, Jenna. As the code enforcement director, I've got a little over 10 years in code enforcement experience with the town, actually. Prior to that, I actually enforced the law. I served eight years in code, in Coast Guard. I was a maritime law enforcement officer, so I did that for eight years, transitioned into code enforcement, and in doing so, I've obtained levels one through four in code enforcement by the Florida Association of Code Enforcement. That includes level one, the fundamentals, fundamentals of code enforcement, level two, administrative aspects, level three, legal issues, and level four, which is officer, officer safety. My assistant code enforcement director, Manfred Valetz, has about five years in code enforcement. Part of that has been served here with the town and the other part with the City of Sunrise. He is certified in levels one, two, and three. Again, is level one, the fundamentals of code enforcement, administrative aspects, and legal issues. Our code officer, which has been with the town for two years, did have a bit of engineering experience prior to coming into the town. She is certified in levels one and four, that is fundamentals of code enforcement and officer safety. As an added bonus, she actually obtained a, she became a certified animal control officer by attending a program that was offered by Davi. It was by the American Animal Cruelty Investigation School. She attended that, that class and eventually became certified as an animal control officer, which is a huge benefit to the town. Again, last but not least, Jenna Anderson. She's been with the town as an administrative coordinator for just about three years, and most of you may know her as the, as the fire chief or assistant fire chief, which she serves in the Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Department for just about seven years. Now, if anyone needs to submit a complaint after hours or during the weekend when you may or may not be able to reach someone in code enforcement, even we do have coverage at nights and weekends. There are times where we only have one officer during the weekend, so if they're not in the office, you can always call the code enforcement hotline. That number is (954) 343-7449. As long as you can leave your name, callback number, your address, the location of possible code violations, and the description of the possible code violation, we should be able to address that issue just by you leaving that voicemail. But if you prefer to speak to an officer yourself, you can just leave a name and callback number, we'll make sure we get back to you. You know, usually, we get back to everyone within 24 hours, so if you need to speak to a live person, just leave your name and a callback number, we'll make sure we, we get back to you. Now, what gives code enforcement the authority to enforce laws? We, we're given the authority primarily through the Florida statute, chapter 162, that is known as the Local Government, Government Code Enforcement Board Act. This act provides the guidelines and requirements on how to enforce the codes, how to impose penalties, provides the authority to a code enforcement board or special magistrate, it sets the fine limitations, and it sets the rules for appeals. And of course, the town, our code enforcement department enforces the codes established by the town by the Unified Land Development Code. This is what council has determined, you know, would favor the residents. It's what they primarily, what has been established as to how the, the council wants the town to, to be by establishing standards for the town, whether that be maintenance standards or codes on how things should be built, et cetera. Now, I also wanted to include something that may, many people may not have been aware of, which is Senate Bill 60 that was passed, I believe, Ju-, July 1st in 2021. What this bill did is essentially prohibit anonymous complaints to be filed for code enforcement. Previously, you could essentially call in, not have to give your name or any information, just file a complaint, and code enforcement would investigate. Well, as of July, I said, July 1st, 2021, that bill was passed, which essentially prohibits anonymous complaints, so in order for you to file a complaint, you'll have to provide your name, address, and then, of course, the complaint. Now, there are, there is an exception to this, which is unless an alleged violation presents an imminent threat to public health, safety, or welfare, or imminent destruction of habitat or sensitive resources. And there is also currently something being proposed to where this bill may be overturned to go back to how it used to be and essentially allow anonymous complaints. But as of now, Senate Bill 60 is in place, therefore anonymous complaints at the moment are not allowed. Now, I'd like to discuss the difference of practice versus reactive. Now, the town of Southwest Ranches is primarily reactive, not proactive. What that means is, in, in order for our code enforcement department to initiate a case or initiate an investigation, it has to be due to a complaint from the public. Now, complaints, as I mentioned, can be filed through a phone call to any one of our staff or by calling the code enforcement hotline, as long as you provide the information I previously mentioned. Or you can even provide it in the form of a letter or email, again, as long as your information is provided. Now, as I mentioned, we are primarily reactive, but there are a few items which are proactive that's been established by town council. One of those is bulk trash, overgrown plots, any violations of the dark skies ordinance, unmaintained roadways on private roads, and our favorite, filling and grading, illegal filling and grading. So I'd like to explain what each of these consists of. So, the violations that pertain to bulk trash are piles that are placed out on incorrect dates, piles that are exceeding the size limit, which is 12 cubic yards, and items not allowed for pickup such as hazardous or construction materials. Now, I provided some examples of each to reference. You can see this first picture, little hard to see, little hard to distinguish between the pile and the actual hedges, but there is a pile that, I mean, it's, I would say, well over 100 cubic yards. So this pile was placed out with the expectancy that it would be picked up by our service provider. Obviously, this pile exceeds the limit, it was not picked up, turned into a code violation, and ultimately had to be, they had to make arrangements, arrangements with the service provider to have this removed. Sorry, just go back a bit. This second picture shows an example of, you know, pile that was put out that seems to be typical within the town. However, the issue here is the size, and while they did make an attempt to cut things into manageable pieces, the trunk of this tree here that was put out for pickup exceeds the capabilities of the grapple truck. So that pile right there would not be serviceable by the service provider. So that would, this resulted in a code notice, you know, violation, and essentially they had to either dispose of this item themselves or cut it into smaller pieces that were manageable for the service provider. So this pile, while it seems innocently enough, it's actually railroad ties that are, you know, actually not allowed for bulk pickup due to the fact that they're soaked in a hazardous material called Creosote. So that alone would make this, make this pile unserviceable, so they would actually have to arrange for, either a service provider to charge a fee for a special pickup, because this cannot go to a regular dump site, this hazardous material has to be disposed of in a different manner. So this pile actually resulted in a code violation. Next item are overgrown plots. Overgrown plots, well, seems simple enough, is essentially any grass, weed, or other low-grain plant that exceeds the limits established by the town. Now, there are more stringent requirements for commercial property, that is, any grass over six inches would be noncompliance, and for residential property, that would be 18 inches. So this first slide will show a clear example of the distinction between a freshly cut lawn versus an overgrown lot. As you can see, there's a clear distinction and easy to see that this property here is exceeding the 18-inch limit, which resulted in this property being cited. This next example is just a vacant lot that has been abandoned for a while, not being properly maintained. Eventually, this property was cited, and I actually got to see the results of this. It became completely different property after the property owner was cited. And, you know, I know Andy said that everyone hates us, but let me give you, this was one example of a property owner that was actually very thankful, we ended up citing him. He was appreciative of, you know, the end result of how his property looked after it was cleaned up. This is another property that was cited within the town, and this slide was chosen to show that not only do we look for the inside of a property being maintained, we also ensure that the swales adjacent to the property are being maintained. So as you can see, this property here was not cut for quite some time, and the swell area became severely overgrown. Next issue I'd like to talk about is the dark skies ordinance. So dark skies, the dark sky ordinance essentially prohibits any lighting that would be essentially intrusive to any other neighbor. So any lighting that produces glare, any lighting that exceeds our threshold of .10 foot candles, any uplighting that exceeds 1,800 lumens, or any athletic lighting would result in a violation of the dark skies ordinance. So one example that you'll see here, which I'm sure the vice mayor is very familiar with, is a property that had two very bright, I believe even three, very bright spotlights. You know, they were on all night, throughout the entire night, and obviously, as you can see from the picture, clearly producing glare, and as you can see from this following picture, this is the result of the, the lights shining onto someone's property. So because we want to preserve our dark skies, this was obviously a violation. You know, it's actually quite a bit of a nuisance to have to deal with that lighting, you know, in the middle of the night. Another issue are unmaintained roadways on private roads. So, seems that some people are not aware this is a proactive issue, but essentially the reason why this came about is, on any public road, the town has the ability to just go in and fix them. We patch roads all the time on public roads, however, on private roads, we don't have that ability, and we don't have the right to just go in and fix a private road. Therefore, council quite recently decided to make this a proactive item where they must repair the asphalt of, on a private road, and it must be up to the town's standards. So the reason why that's important is this example right here. As you can see, some of these holes were actually patched up, but they were not patched properly. This is not asphalt, these were actually filled in by concrete. It's not going to last very long, and it's not going to hold up anywhere near the expected life of the road. Just another example, you can see how, how big and deep these holes can get. So this can actually be a life safety issue. You don't want, you know, something as simple as driving a car, you don't want to fall into this and cause you to swerve a bit, possibly engage, you know, cause an accident. Riding a horse, this can cause, you know, injury to horses, or even kids riding their bikes down the road might fall into this, fall over and get injured. As you can see, there's another example of a, of a hole, there's, this entire hole here was actually repaired at the same time, and because it was not repaired properly, just failed shortly after. And filling and grading, which is definitely the biggest issue here in the town, it is our priority here to enforce this. So any illegal filling or grading, that means that any changes in elevations without prior approval or permitting. So any kind of fill permit is going to require a wetland determination, whether that be a level one, two, or three. So depending on the level of fill permit, it may require the drainage district approval. In some cases, a topographic survey may be required, and in very severe cases where the limits have been exceeded and you cannot meet the drainage district standards, removal of the fill material is required. So for example, if a property is determined by South Broward has to have a 20% water retention area, and they've, they've filled beyond what's allowed and they have only 10% of the area or the property as, as a water retention area, there's no other way around it, there's no variance that can be provided, no exception, that fill material has to be removed in order for that permit to be approved. So you can see here, this picture, there's a little over 10 loads of fill material brought in. This property brought in this material without any permits. Luckily, it was not spread, so we were able to see the, the elevations prior to the material being brought in and spread. So this resulted in a violation. It's a clear example of what would be a violation by bringing in fill without any permits. This example here is a developer who wanted to start preparing the property without the permits. They were obviously stopped, we issued a stop work order, and they had to come in and get after-the-fact permits for the fill material that was brought into the property. And this third example serves to answer a question that we, is very common for, for our department. How much material requires a permit? Quite simple, one load of fill requires a permit. If you're bringing in bags of sand that you can buy at Home Depot, and you're just bringing it in in your pickup truck, and you buy 10 bags, no permits required. But when you have a dump truck coming in and bringing in a load of fill material, which is typically about 18 cubic yards, that will require a level one fill permit. So next, I'd like to discuss the process. You know, we've already discussed how to submit a complaint, but what happens to that complaint once it's been submitted to our department? Well, first, we have to investigate the alleged violation. You know, once we receive a complaint, we'll go out to the property, inspect it, and determine if there is a valid, an actual violation found. The officer will document the violation and subsequently issue a notice of violation. The notice of violation, all notices have to be mailed, certified mail with return receipt. A copy of that notice is also posted at the property and posted in our town hall. Now, we generally provide 10 business days for a violation to be brought into compliance. However, we do always provide extensions upon request. So essentially, the notice serves to initiate the communication with the resident. So if they, but they, if they call us and tell us they're looking to comply, but just need a bit more time than what we've been provided, we will generally always allow an, an extension, because again, as I mentioned, our primary goal is voluntary compliance, not to be punitive. But if the violation is not corrected by the deadline provided, then we will issue a notice of hearing and the set is ca-, the case is set for a special magistrate hearing. Once the case is presented to the special magistrate, we must prove the case, and essentially a final order will be provided by the magistrate, which provides a final compliance date, still without any fines being imposed. A final compliance date will be set, and the, and a fine amount will be established, which can range anywhere from $100 to $250 a day for the time the violation exists. For any repeat violation, we have the ability to double that amount. So for example, we set a fine for $250 a day, they come into compliance, but three months down the line, the same violation occurs, we can bring it forth again, but the violation can be doubled, so that would be $500 per day for that violation. Now, in the instances where an event is irreparable or irreversible, we may actually impose a maximum penalty of up to $5,000 for the incident. Now, even when a final order is provided, again, because we try to help everyone come into compliance and provide them adequate time to correct the violation, if the, if the violator comes into town and can provide a justified reason why they've had not been able to bring it into compliance but are working on it, the magistrate can actually amend the final order to provide additional time to be brought into compliance. And if the violation is not corrected, fines are imposed on the property until the violation is corrected, and eventually a lien is placed on the property until the fines are paid.
Julio, before you move on.
Sure.
If you wouldn't mind going back there. Can you explain what irreparable or irreversible violations are? I don't understand.
Sure. So that would be a violation that occurs and you're unable to fix. For example, a party that occurred. A party that occurred, once it's done, it's done, you can't fix, it's already happened. So that would be a violation that's considered irreversible or irreparable.
Thank you.
So the next thing I want to talk about are essentially hot topics in the town. Essentially, we've been dealt with, recently been dealt with a lot of unpermitted parties, which in turn resort, you know, resort to noise complaints, and a lot of these have been brought forth by short-term rentals. So unpermitted parties, essentially, any assembly should be limited to family, friends, and acquaintances of the property owners, and/or permanent residents of the, permanent residents of the premises and their guests. So anytime you have a gathering which consists of 30 or more people, you should obtain a permit to have that gathering.
Julio, can you, I just had an incident, I know you're aware of, a month or so ago, where we, resident had a couple of different letters on that. Can you kind of, while we're on the topic, just speak about how that letter came? resident had a couple of different letters on that. Can you kind of, while we're on the topic, just speak about how that letter can be transformed over time?
Sure. So essentially we do have for the most part a standard letter. However, that letter can vary based on the specifics of the event. For example, we document how many people are attending the event, the proposed times of the event, what the event is for, how they propose parking for the event. So based on the information they provide, it can actually change, you know, the letter. Even though it is for the most part standard, there are certain things. For example, if you have temporary structures, if you, if you build a, you know, a stand for, you have someone performing a live band or something like that, that, that can impact how that letter is, is presented as an approval. But for the most part, the letter is a standard letter and is issued for any, any applicant, for the most part, it's going to be the same, which is small variances.
Thank you.
So in no event shall any assembly be held for profit. There should be no admission fee, payment, or other consideration aside from normal congratulatory gifts. And in no event shall any assembly be advertised or open to the general public. As I mentioned before, it's supposed to be for friends and family. So an assembly cannot take place upon vacant lot or undeveloped property. Or on, or on an unoccupied dwelling. So it must be a habited structure, a, you know, dwelling with someone living on it. Can't just be a, we've had this incident where we've had a property, you know, it had a house on it. No one lived there, but they used it to host events. It had essentially a, it was, it was not listed as a short-term rental, but essentially they were renting it out just for events. We had maybe about once a month, they would host an event where they'd have, you know, sometimes in excess of 100 people showing up to this property. And it was just being used to host events, no one living on the property.
Four feet? Four feet?
Four feet, yes. Now noise, noise means any sound which annoys or disturbs human or animals or which causes or tends to cause any adverse psychological or physiological effect on humans or animals. So no person shall operate or cause to be operated any sound in such a manner as to create a noise disturbance that is audible in a receiving land. So this is direct from our code and this is how we determine whether there is a noise violation or noise nuisance. So as I, as I mentioned before, short-term rentals cannot obtain permits to host an event. So we have had instances where we, I'd be approached by someone who owns a property, is renting it out, doing short-term rentals and wants to host an event. They get denied if they apply because our code states that, again, it has to be for someone living on the property, for their friends and family. And it can't be for profit. And obviously if you're doing a short-term rental, that's for profit. So the way we limit the, the adverse, you know, effect to the neighborhood is we only allow six permits to be issued per property per calendar year. So while we do allow people to have parties, they are limited by the timeframe and also the amounts of events that can be held within a year. So six is the limit and our limit that we allow a party to be permitted for is 11:00 PM. So I, I do make everyone aware of that when they apply. And I also let them know, this doesn't necessarily mean you have to disperse and shut down the party, but no noise should be audible after 11:00 PM. That's the cutoff time. So any noise that continues past 11:00 PM, even if they've obtained a permit, could result in a violation if we receive complaints. That's all I have for this evening, Your Honor. Mr. Mayor.
Wow, it's promoted.
If anyone has any questions, concerns, anything.
I have a question for you Julio, and that deals with the parties and with noise. You mentioned at 11:00 PM, if they generate no noise, they, they can run their party till 4:00 AM technically.
That is correct. Yes. If it's not causing a disturbance, they should have no issues. Again, they would only cause a disturbance if police are called.
Now, if, if, using a same, a similar scenario with our noise ordinance, if, if they are, they've got a rock and roll band that's, you can hear five blocks away. That's not, the permit doesn't allow that to happen. In other words, our noise ordinance kicks in as soon as the noise leaves, leaves the property 24/7, correct?
Correct to an extent. So if police is called because the noise is too loud, police will, would approach the homeowner and ask if it's too loud, ask that they turn it down. However, if the noise is brought down to a reasonable level, then the permit does allow them to continue having that event. But if it's brought up to a, a level that the police officer or code officer determines that it's too loud, then no, that permit would not protect them from that. So we do always give them one opportunity to bring noise down.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah.
Can I jump in on that question for a second, Gary? So I just want to be clear. That was a, that was a great question. So is there any difference between how loud the sound can be if you have a permit or if you don't have a permit? Is it the same criteria or is it different?
It's different in the sense that if you don't have a permit, then any noise would be considered a violation. If it's, if it's audible by your neighbor, whether it's reasonable, it would still be a violation based on the fact that no permit was obtained.
Okay. Okay.
Julio, I'd just like to say that the lighting that you showed was handled very well by your code officers. And the resident, once it was brought to his attention and through the guidance of your code enforcement officer out there, the owner himself actually came to the site where those pictures were taken and directed the people to correct those lights. So I, I thank you for that. And like I said, everything worked well with them.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I got one.
Sure.
Just want to thank you for your work with loud parties. You know, a lot of parties that have been happening in the area. And also your enforcement of the dark skies ordinance. It's something that when I was elected that we first broadened the scope of code violations to be a primary offense. Thank you so much for doing your work on that.
Thank you, council member, but I couldn't do it alone. I have my team that helped me. I have my officers who actually work the nights. They're the ones primarily dealing with these, these issues. They do a great job and couldn't do it without them.
Just a quick comment, Julio.
Sure.
Thank you for putting this together. I've been sitting in council meetings for over 20 years and every time an issue pops up, I'm learning something new, like tonight, what we were talking about. I think one of the biggest challenges we have in the town is really resident education. Repeat offenders are going to do what they're going to do. But I think most of the people in our town that are violators probably don't even know. And I know we've talked in the past about outreach. And I'm glad to see in this, I just got today's, this month, this upcoming month's newsletter and it's got an article in here about fill and excavation permits. And, you know, I know everybody doesn't read this and we probably need to get this out through some of the other channels as well. But this goes a long way to put in front of people that you can't just order up 50 truckloads of fill. And, you know, a bulldozer on Monday and you can do whatever you want because what people don't realize is their activities generally impact somebody else. When it comes to fill, they flood their neighbors. When it comes to loud parties, upset the family, I mean, there's a lot of young families here with little babies. And, you know, if there's a rock and roll party going on next door or whatever kind of music it is until 3 o'clock in the morning, nobody in that house sleeps next door. So these are all, they're not here to stop the fun. They're really here to maintain a certain quality of life. And I, I know you guys probably have the toughest job in town hall. And I applaud you for, for being professional and applying it where necessary. And most importantly, it's important to realize everybody that their job is not punitive. Their job isn't to come and make your life miserable. Their, their job is to come and get you into compliance. And I've worked with Julio. Somebody's called on me. And, you know, as long as you're working with them, they are reasonable and, and they're very happy to work with you. But if you go to the code enforcement meetings and you hear all the people that show up saying, you know, I shouldn't be cited for this or charged with this or et cetera, et cetera. They're doing it the basis of law. They're not doing it because they've got a grudge or your next door neighbor called and said, I don't like my next door neighbor charging with this. There's evidence, there's a whole hearing process. This goes through due process, no different than if you go to court. So I want to congratulate you on the professionalism of your team and the hard work you guys do day in and day out. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilman. And on that topic of community outreach, was saving this for a later time, but we've actually, I've actually discussed this with Andy in communications with December. She's helped me out. So basically we want to propose a program where we're going to be setting up stand, a little tent over at the farmer's market on Saturdays, just to have one of our staff members there to be able to set up shop and just be able to answer any questions. Maybe people who don't want to come into town hall to report something may want to stop by the farmer's market, talk to us and, you know, we can provide just information, provide, you know, provide education and just explain for anyone that missed this process, we can definitely provide further education at these, you know, farmer's market as a way to, you know, program for community outreach. So my assistant co-director, Manfred Belet, he's the one who's actually volunteered to be out there. And I think he can do a great job at explaining everything I just did and, you know, providing that knowledge to the residents.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Let me just, everybody has set it up here extremely well. But thank you to you, your staff. I do believe it's the toughest job in town. And you all handle it very professionally. And I appreciate what you're saying. And it's true that you're just looking for compliance. We're not looking to this to be punitive. So appreciate that. I do think the idea of, of further education is critical. As I was thinking about this, knowing this was coming up, one of the things that I wondered about was if there is, and we don't, I'm not looking really for feedback on this, but maybe we can think about it and talk about it in the future. If there is a way, rather than doing a code complaint per se, if there could be some way of just kind of with no, nothing written up or nothing, not even a warning, but just set up a, a meeting with resident to kind of go through their property to say, hey, what's in compliance, what's not in compliance? And do it in a more of an informative way, no, no follow-up there, but just from a communication standpoint so that people that maybe are concerned about something can get some feedback without knowing that there's not going to be any further repercussions for it. Just an idea. Anyway, we can talk about that in the future.
Yes.
But, but great presentation. Thank you. Appreciate it. To you and the entire staff.
I have another question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. And by the way, that's a pretty good idea. A, a non-official inspection of a property. You know, and then just to get an opinion and let it go with that.
It can't be done legally.
Okay. Well, that just got shot down.
It can't be done legally.
Why not?
There's a Supreme Court decision on doctrine of latches that says that if a code officer, and David's shaking his head because I'm sure Councilmember Kozinski knows it, if a code enforcement officer goes to a property and sees an open violation that he knows is a violation, if he does not report it or he or she reports it, the municipality is waived forever for citing that person for that violation.
But we do that all the time for the things that are reactive. Our, our code folks see that all the time and don't report it.
If he sees something, when inspecting a property on a proactive basis or even if he's asked to inspect the property, he is required to report it. That's what the law says.
All right. I mean, the law's the law, but it's, it's a crappy law because I'll say that because, because at the end of the day, the idea as what he just said is that it's compliance. And, and if that takes a significant tool away from compliance, that's, that's, that's not good. So
I'm just letting you.
I understand. I'm not, not, you didn't write it.
The second thing, just only because you all brought it up, so I might as well say it. I was in Tallahassee all day and on various issues. There is no current bill running, and that's why Councilmember Hartman, Vice Mayor couldn't, no, Councilmember, sorry, couldn't find it to remove the anonymous complaint. You know, we were told that it was going forward, but there's no active bill. Like, you know, I sat in Robin Bartleman's office with her aide looking. There is no bill. You know, that's currently being moved and removing it. Hollywood was in Tallahassee also, so were many other cities. It was Palm Beach days today as well. What most cities are doing, and I brought this up to Andy and he's like, ugh, you know, I don't know. But all cities are having the problem now with anonymous complaints. It's pitting neighbor against neighbor. It's causing major issues of violence throughout cities when they find out who cited them or who called them in for a violation. What many cities are doing is, I'm not saying you should do it, but I just want to throw it out so you know, and Andy's laughing, is that when a code violation comes in for a certain district in that it goes to the district representative, someone calls, you know, a council member and says, hey, my neighbor has their RV, you know, I can see it every day. It's driving me crazy. They log in that code, the complaint as the district commissioner to avoid the issue with the residents attacking each other. So I, I just want to let you know what other municipalities are doing because it is causing issues.
Yeah, that's not a good idea. We're here to represent the residents. We're not here to be reporters of violations. So I think that's, that's not a viable, I mean, I, I get other folks are doing it. Not a good idea. Not a good idea.
Yeah, I'll just comment on that as well because Keith, after I had heard about the, you know, it was going to swing in the other direction again. You know, people calling me regularly and I was advised not to file under my name because then it can be construed as harassment. You don't think so? Okay. Well, and I got bad advice from my chief lawyer.
No, no. You, it would be harassment. It's harassment to constantly call on the same property. We have property owners that do that. That becomes harassment. But not you calling in, you know, various code enforcement complaints on separate property.
Okay. Good, good enough. Thank you.
Okay. Getting back to the question I was going to ask. It's hypothetical. You were mentioning fill. A neighbor asked me if they could bring in fill to make a raised garden, vegetable garden, small plot. And I advised them to get a level one permit. Now, it probably involved one or two pickup truckloads of topsoil and sand or mulch, organic mixture. I heard you say earlier that they may not be required to get a permit on, on something like that. And can you clear that up for me?
Sure. Essentially, if you're able to go on your own and just buy a few bags of material from Lowe's, Home Depot and you bring it home on your, on your truck or van, however you can get it to your house, if it's enough to where you can do it yourself and you're buying bags of it, you'd have to buy, you know, several hundred bags to equate to a dump truckload. So essentially, if it's enough to where you can do it yourself, you buy it at a
And you buy a bulk like at Bushel Stop or something like that or like a pickup truckload? It's not in bags.
Once you're getting to a pickup truckload, I mean, if it gets to a gray area, I always, you know, resort to, you know, I confer with Rod. He's the professional side.
A pickup truck is like one cubic yard.
Yeah, about a ton.
It's not very much.
Yeah, it's usually, no, I think it's, I think it's, yeah, yeah, it's usually about one cubic yard. Yeah, as opposed to a, you know, 18 yards in one of the big dump trucks.
Yeah. The question which was posed to me about doing a raised garden bed, you know, for vegetables and, you know, that kind of thing. And I said, get, get a permit.
For that amount, especially if you're talking about organic material mulch or you're talking about dirt, soil.
Dirt, you know, for plants cultivation.
Yeah, for that amount, the, the purpose of a fill permit is to avoid any changes in elevation. So anything that's going to impact drainage. That amount, it's very unlikely that it's going to cause any kind of impacted drainage, especially if it's in a, you know, especially if it's in a, you know, up for a garden where it's already kind of all closed off and established.
Right, six inches wall, you know, that kind of...
Right, so that's not going to impact drainage in any way. We're not going to be citing for that, I believe, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, Rod, but yeah, that's essentially something that we allow without the need to get a fill permit.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clear that up a little bit. Thank you.
No problem.
Awesome. Anything else? Great job, Julio. Thank you for all the information.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right. Proclamation for procurement, procurement month. You know, while we get that prepared, I just want to say a couple of words, that we are very fortunate to have a highly professional and well-trained procurement department, and they keep us out of trouble, and they also find us some exceptional, you know, purchases at a good price. So we are very fortunate, so it's great to have this proclamation this evening.
Whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business, and whereas in addition to the purchase of goods and services, procurement adds value to the organization by performing such functions as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, and cultivating working relationships with suppliers, other procurement professionals, and other departments within the organization. And whereas public procurement professionals in the Town of Southwest Ranches and in other public and private organizations have tremendous influence on the economic conditions in the United States with the cumulative purchasing power running into the billions of dollars. And whereas procurement in the Town of Southwest Ranches is committed to providing high caliber strategic logistical and operational support of all departments within the Town of Southwest Ranches, and whereas procurement and the Town of Southwest Ranches recognize, support, and practice the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency established by the Institute for Public Procurement, or NIGP, as fundamental tenants of the public procurement profession. And whereas NIGP has proclaimed the month of March as procurement month to further expand the awareness of the purchasing professional's role to governmental officials, the general public, business, and corporate leaders. And whereas I urge all citizens to recognize the role of the purchasing and materials management profession within business, industry, and government, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and town council of the Town of Southwest Ranches do hereby proclaim March 2023 as procurement month.
Great. Thank you, Russell. And like I say, we do appreciate all the hard work that our procurement team does. Let me help, please, pass that along. We appreciate it. All right. Number five, public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we have five public comment cards. The first is going to be the Seek Society, they left?
Yep.
Or they did?
Yep.
They signed in, sorry. Noah Hollisworth, followed by Anna Coldus, followed by John Garotti, and final speaker will be Pamela Olson.
Noah Hollisworth, 199th Avenue, fasten your seat belts. Fourteen months ago, I came before this council to correct egregious assault on 199th, 201, 202 by our engineering department on the perfectly functioning swales of our area and the physical damage to individuals on our town and injuries that these changes caused. That was in January of last year. September 12th, a resolution finally came forth through this council, putting changes to the engineering and Tisdor Drainage Section. The council saw that there was defects and forwarded to the Drainage and Infrastructure Committee. Drainage and Infrastructure on 11/15/2002 reviewed it and made minor changes to what was submitted to them by myself. Very minor changes. The board then voted, which is shown in their approval in January of this year, of their minutes, referring it back in November to the council. The Drainage Staff Liaison did not forward it. The council liaison to that committee did not forward it or check on it. None of the council that was present at that meeting asked where the heck it was. I asked the other day, "Where was it?" Because I figured it would come in February before the council. It didn't. It is now March. This is an empty meeting, a perfect time for it to come before you. It's not here. No one knows where it is. We're working on it. Well, we're going to see. We've been busy. Every excuse in the world by staff, except here it is because it's in a completed form that was approved. All it had to do was be plugged back into the format that was already there. We have waited for delays, it being ignored, like a few, what's, another thirty seconds? Waited, it's been ignored, delayed, and every other excuse in the world by staff. Drainage and Infrastructure Board took care of their end of the deal in one meeting. But it did not come before their October meeting because staff delayed it then. Said it came before November, when I pressed for it. It is now time for this council to say, "Next meeting, have it before you as a first resolution before anything else, and take care of it. We have waited fourteen months. That'll be the fifteenth month." Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
Anna, you can come up as your call. John Garotti's next, and then Pamela is...
Good evening, everybody. How y'all doing? Julio, thanks for that report. It was really helpful. I know that our little association will eat it up, but I'm not here on behalf of the association, just me personally. I just wanted to take a minute to kind of share some thoughts, which goes something like as follows. I'm doing this contemporaneously. I thought I might have time to throw some notes together, but that didn't happen. And for me, when I first moved to the town, I definitely fit into the category of ignorance is bliss, and the more I get involved, the more I see things that are just disturbing to me. So to just kind of share a thought that I just want to share with everyone in the room, first and foremost, we're neighbors. We live together. We're property owners. We care about each other. And I just hope we can get to a point where everything that Julio said, that he does, can always, always happen. And I'm not here to debate or discuss, just really share a feeling. And, you know, you had that one guy who committed suicide over his fines and just, you know, whether it's the two years of COVID and what that did to all of us when people all around us were getting sick and dying or what, but something just made me a whole lot more sensitive to the need to hold hands and help each other. And I really appreciate that some of the comments that have been made this evening. It makes at least me and some of my concerns on it feel heard, and I appreciate it. And I hope we can just keep working together to not feel like neighbors, pitted against neighbor, and people are calling each other in, and, you know, even Mrs. Chapels, after all that stuff, when one of our neighbors helped clean up her property, she still got a $150 fine, and she was compliant. I got a fine when I cut a tree down, didn't know it was legal, illegal, a bunch of years ago, when some lightning struck it and it was going to hit our house. We immediately complied, we got a fine. So that's all I mean, you know? There's exceptions. I think what we were talking about here, what Julio was talking about, I take him at his word, and I'm sure it's the case 95% of the time. And I guess what I'm talking about is the edge cases that end up getting us all angry with each other and pitting each other against each other. I don't like it. I love this town. I care about you guys, and I'm just glad it seems like we're going to kind of dig in and work on this. I think it'll make us a better town. I want us to be truly rural, which doesn't mean anything that I just mentioned. Go live like real rural, you know? I spent years in Ohio, even though I'm from New Orleans, and it's not like that. Thank you very much. Really appreciate the time and the opportunity and tonight's presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Anna.
Can you hear me? I'm John Garotti, 162nd Avenue. I'm sure you guys all know who I am already. Can you guys hear me? All right. Code enforcement, code enforcement, code enforcement. What do we have to talk about code enforcement? That gentleman right there is the incredible, incredible employee of the town that most of the time can't even do his job properly. Reason being, most of the councilmen here, not most, some, let me correct that, use the code enforcement department as a, like a toy, and that's not what it's intended for. And to correct you, Bob, I was reading Senate Bill 60. You can't. And you might be listening to Mr. Polyakov, but you cannot be on a council position and make complaints anonymously, proactively, reactively. It's not legal. But that's what we have courts for. For a town to be rural, we had a workshop on this, rural, we hold the record in fines for residents, hundreds of thousands of dollars. What part of that is rural? I mean, irreparable? We live in the country. We live in the Everglades. It's, we speak a whole bunch of, "Let's do rural, let's do that." We put on cowboy hats, and it's all false. It's not real. Code enforcement, yes, you don't want this to turn into some towns that have trailers everywhere and people can't live their lives correctly. But I'll tell you what, sit in a code enforcement hearing, as many of us have, and you'll see how this is not how code enforcement is supposed to be at all. And I am not afraid to say any of it. Hundreds of thousands of dollars on a fine on a property? Who does that? Where's the cap? Where's the limitation? Mr. Bright Cruz brought up a really good point. Why not have an ombudsman? Why not have a filter? Why does it immediately have to be? Toss them to the courts. Let's destroy the resident, because that's what happens. On many occasions, that gentleman right there has not been allowed to do his job. I'm a victim right here. I have no problem saying it. It's facts. All you got to do, do a records request. You guys have access to all this. Look and see what this town has done to many residents for 20 years. And yes, I'm looking right at you in the face, dead at you in the face. It's not your fault, my friend.
Let's not get personal. If it gets personal, then we're going to...
Steve, it has to be personal. You know why? Because it's not five bucks. It's hundreds and thousands of dollars into the millions. Our code enforcement process is wonderful until it gets into the courts, until it goes in front of the magistrate. Sit in one of the meetings yourself. It's not personal. It's business. This is a business. That's all I have for tonight. Julio, great job.
Thank you. Any other?
Good evening, councilors, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen in the room. My name is Pamela Olson, and I am very happy to be in this meeting. Actually, today is my first time, and I can tell you guys, I learned a lot about you, especially about the presentation of Mr. Julio Medina, who is the person who is in charge of the code enforcement. And he did a neat job, neat presentation, and I can even say, I don't regret that I came to this meeting because I am learning a lot about you guys. As I told you before, my name is Pamela Olson. I am the owner broker of Pamela Olson Group Realty, and I am trying to work it out and start my niche in the Southwest Ranches. And I figured it out and realized that coming to this meeting is the best way to learn about your city. I think this is from the inside that I have to learn, so when the time comes to present any listing, I will have all the insight from the city to start promoting my listings and houses. So I thank you a lot for receiving me open arms because I was able to stay even I am not from the city, but I was able to be here and learn for your beautiful city. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. I just want to make a quick comment on that. I don't normally do this, but while you're here, so we did recently actually put together a kind of a fact sheet for realtors to get familiar with our town, to kind of let folks know what it's like to be here, some of the restrictions and some of the non-restrictions and things like that. It's available on our website if you, I would encourage you to take a look at that.
Yes, I already checked on your website. Actually, I haven't found that part yet, but I will be in touch with the city, so they might show me where is that part, because I learn a lot in your websites, well done, about the parks and the activities that you usually have, and plus coming to this meeting, it will help me a lot.
Great.
But I will check it out immediately, probably tomorrow by coming to the city hall and see where is that part, so I comply with that.
Great, thank you.
Thanks to you. Thank you.
Is that it? All right. Board reports. Do we have any board reports this evening? Seeing none, is there our council member comments?
I'll start.
Go ahead, Gary.
Go ahead, Gary.
Oh, I'm going to be really quick. Just a few general announcements. Coming up, we have the 5K, which we've already talked about at the barn. We know that the Education Advisory Board is moving flamingos around all the time in different spots. They appear everywhere, and it's quite fun to see that as you're driving around. They're here every one day and gone the next. We have our next hazmat at the barn on the 29th of April, and it's going to have shredding and prescription drop-off with DAVI police. This coming Saturday, we got Big Saturday. We have Water Matters from nine to three, and then when you get done with that, come to the barn dance if you've got the tickets. It's going to, food provided by Outback, and there's, I got a sneak peek earlier today at all the stuff you can bid on and prizes, and it's quite extensive. So, yeah, it looks, it's going to be, it's going to be a great, great night for everybody who's got tickets for it. The DMV Flowmobile is going to be here from, here at Town Hall on the 22nd. If you need their services, contact Deborah at the Town Clerk Office for an appointment. We just got handed a notice, notification that Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, is going to be resurfacing I-75 from Sheridan until Griffin Road, and it's going to start in April and expected to last for two years. And there's going to be some lane shutdowns going on with all of that. And one other thing I have, is going to be directed to Keith, and it concerns a property that we've all heard about, that apparently had a very ugly ending to a venue that occurred that, and it's been, I just wanted to ask Keith several questions, if you can bring us up to speed legally, if you can tell us anything about...
So I believe you're talking about the incident that occurred on CLO Farms?
Correct.
Okay. I was notified by the Briar County Property Appraiser earlier today, and they said it can be announced tonight, that on Tuesday, they notified the farm that they have revoked their agricultural tax exemption effective immediately, that they believed it was obtained illegally, and as such, they have issued... it was obtained illegally, and as such, they have issued a full-out revocation.
Awesome.
Links directly to code enforcement, and let me explain why. Here's a resident who's now been cited, Julio, eight times, maybe more at this point? Eight times. So we're now getting up into the, maybe more, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in code enforcement fines, rather than bringing the property into compliance, which they could. They decided to hire a legal counsel and to sue the town, saying it's our fault that they should be allowed to do what they're doing. Okay? And this seems to be a common phenomenon in southwest ranches. You know, when you speak, and I heard the resident speak about hundreds of thousands in code enforcement fines, each one of those could have been stopped way before the hearing, just by bringing the property into compliance, and in this case, stop having illegal activities at your establishment. So now, this resident is, who has, you know, I think we have a special hearing, Julio, coming up for what, five more parties? Four or five more parties? Four more parties, so that's another forty thousand dollars that will be seeking in fines. So forty thousand in fines plus legal fees, that it will be hundreds of thousands of dollars, that you're gonna see that resident come before you, us, and say, why do I have so much code enforcement fines on my property, when they were told at the get-go how to bring the property into compliance? Code enforcement does everything in their power to help that property owner understand how to bring the property into compliance. But this case, they chose not to bring it into compliance. So as a result, the town will be responding to their complaint with the due found information that they were revoked their ag exemption, and we will be providing it to the circuit court and telling the judge that there is no even law that they could pretend to be under that would permit them to have that use or that activity within that establishment. In addition to that, we've recently got noticed that they intend to have another major party, I think this weekend, Andy, next weekend, excuse me, next weekend. And our police officers, as a result of the revocation of ag and the life safety issues that have become present based upon what occurred, you know, a few nights ago, that they will issue an NTA, which is a notice to appear. Mayor, you and I have spoken how NTAs work, and they will be required to go to criminal court to explain why they continually violate the town's code. If this problem persists, and if it will be up to the council how it chooses to continue with it, you are absolutely able to seek an injunction to prevent further activities similar to how you gave a street that had a veterinary clinic relief, you know, several months ago. It's the same process in which you would say to a court, this needs to stop immediately. That will be a decision of the council at some point in the future if this activity does not stop. So, council member, hopefully that answered your question. That's the latest update on this, and you know, we will keep you advised.
Thank you, Keith. One other thing that I need to mention, I failed, and I just got a message by my significant other. The annual Rolling Oaks Egg Hunt is gonna be in the day before Easter, April eighth. Starts at eleven o'clock. You can have pictures with the bunny rabbit. We have a buddy wrangler, a buddy photographer, and a bunny.
Nice.
And we have prizes for the golden egg prize. Vice Mayor's in charge of that one. Jim's really good with that one. But we have five thousand eggs out there. Everything's gonna be distributed. It's gonna be a lot of fun. The weather is predicted to be great. And so, you know, we're like a month off on this, but, so that'll be coming up, and there'll be flyers put out here at Town Hall and other associations, you know, concerning that. So just want to mention that, that gets me dinner, so.
Great, thank you, Gary. David?
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. I don't know if you've noticed, everybody's got these red lights under microphones, except for me. This is supposed to be an experimental microphone that they're using that we're gonna be transitioning into.
You know, I'll tell you, I don't think it works as nearly as well as these, because you're not coming across on the, you know, you really have to, I think you have to really speak directly into that.
Right into the mic.
Yeah, I think so, unfortunately.
All right, well, thanks. I was gonna start with some other issues, but I want to thank you, Keith, and thank code enforcement for the issues that we just spoke about. Since November fifth, 2020, my phone has rang three, two to three times a week about complaints about that property. And, you know, all we can do is do our process. And to learn that the agricultural classification was revoked, because basically, the way it was put to me, that, once they looked inside the barn, from that video that everybody has seen, that it, there really is no ag purpose on that property. So I commend Mr. Kier for his work on this. I commend Mr. Polyakov. Keith, thank you so much for your work. Mr. Medina, thank you so much for your work on this. It's very much appreciated by the neighbors that have contacted me constantly about this. Moving on, the 5K, I know that it's a great issue. I've participated in many years. This year, I won't make it. I'll be out of town. My mother's eighty-first birthday. I have to go to that. Can't miss that for anything. The Rural Arts and Design Advisory Board has worked with Laura Warren in doing a mural on the Polyakov Founder's Wall. Now, if, those of you that are unfamiliar with this, if you take a drive out west, just before you get to the CVS, you'll find the Founder's Park. And just along the east side of that is a wall that, for many years, has just been blank. Well, Ms. Warren proposed and was awarded with the project of putting a mural on there. She did six panels, and then everybody was so, I guess, amazed with her amazing work, and her work is beautiful, that she actually was contracted with doing the remainder of the wall. Actually, the wall, I guess there's twelve more panels that she's working on. And that's proceeding. Also, with the Rural Arts and Design Advisory Board, get your cameras ready, because they're working on the eleventh annual photo contest. So get your cameras ready to participate with that. I spoke with Chris Brownlow regarding the Parks Board, and recently, they're going to, in near future, they will be discussing the various trails within Sunshine Ranches. And this has to do with a recent development that's going to, that's proposed to affect Sunshine Ranches. So if you are an equestrian and are interested in trails in Sunshine Ranches, it's kind of important to attend this meeting and express your interest in what's going on with that. My fourth item has to do with traffic violations in the town. Let's go with District One. I was provided with information from Davie Police Department, which has been doing an amazing, great job for enforcing our traffic violations. The violations have increased substantially. And the purpose isn't to punish people, it's to keep the speeding down. And I'm gonna give you a personal example. Two nights ago, I came home from work, and I decided, okay, I'm gonna take my dogs for a walk. I try to do that as long as there's no meetings that I need to attend. And I'm walking from Holatay Trail West up Blue Ray Road, and keeping my dogs on the side of the road. And I had a flashlight with me. It was borderline twilight into dark. I started flashing my light at a car that was coming. The car was accelerating. And when it came to me, the car came within inches of me. I was not happy because the entire Blue Ray Road was available. And this guy, and I later found out there was a delivery person from whatever, Amazon or whoever does deliveries in the neighborhood, because he came in and left right away. Nearly ran me over, and if my dogs had been in the street, they would not be here with us today. And it very, very much frustrated me. I couldn't make, I couldn't get a tag, couldn't do anything, because it wasn't anything that I could supervise. I couldn't get any identification of the vehicle. It very much frustrated me. So District One, they've had thirty-one traffic violations. Of those thirty-one traffic violations, twenty-three were speeding. Every single one of those were outside of the inner roads, meaning either on US-27 or Griffin. District Two, sixty-five traffic violations. Of those, fifty-three were speeding. Twenty-two of those were on the inner roads of District Two. District Three, thirty-five violations. Of those thirty-five, twenty-one were speeding, seven were on the inner roads. Not so much. Not a big deal issue there. District Four, a hundred and forty-one violations. That's probably more than everybody else combined. A hundred and twenty-seven were speeding. And forty-seven of those citations were on the inner roads that are not Griffin Road. So speeding still continues. And I just have to plead with Davie Police, keep your work up, keep your work up. It is not time to sit by. I requested that the speed sign that indicates the speed going, sit in my driveway or sit on my property. So people on Holatay can know what's going on, because I know Ed Gonzalez talks to me frequently about the speeding, the speeding, the speeding. So it's something that really needs to, we're doing a good job. We just need to keep it on, keep going on with that. Water Matters Day, folks seen this flyer? I already registered Saturday morning. It opens at nine. And I happened to just scan on one of the news links. I don't know if it was Local Ten, probably is what it was. And I clicked on the link and I found out that I had to register. So if you're interested in getting, get two free trees, first of all, arrive early. But second of all, second of all, register. So you have no inhibitions on you getting the trees. I know the town always has a setup there, and it's always at a great location. I plan to be there for quite a while. So hope to see you there at Water Matters Day. And then last, this weekend, we have the Spring Forward of the Time Change. So don't forget about changing your clocks on Saturday night, and so you can be on time.
Thank you, David. Yeah, Bob?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna go through things that I don't want to repeat. I mean, you guys have done a great job. But I do want to get some clarification on some comments that were made earlier, because I kind of feel like we were fed some misinformation here. Keith, is it true that, you know, I cannot submit a code enforcement complaint on behalf of a neighbor? Because if I'm breaking the law, I get called all the time. I get emails all the time.
I'm happy to relook at that. I did ask when I was in Tallahassee this week, and they told me that's exactly how a lot of cities are handling it today. So, you know, you are a citizen of the town. So being that, you are allowed to be a complainant on a code enforcement matter.
Good, good. If you would clarify, because I'd hate to be in violation of state law. Okay. Let's see. Now, as well, we also heard tonight that we have record code enforcement fines. Andy, I don't know if you have any visibility into the other cities since you're part of...
That a hundred percent is not correct.
Sorry?
That's a hundred percent not correct.
Fort Lauderdale versus Southwest Ranch?
Hollywood is in the millions. I looked at one today there that was over six hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So we're not even close.
Yeah. It didn't make sense to me either. I just want somebody to say it. All right. Now, the saddest one that I heard was suicide by code violation or code enforcement violation. And Andy, I do remember that one, but maybe you could further elaborate, because it's a really sad story that I think is being exploited here.
Well, yeah, thank you, council member. It was a horribly, horribly sad story. I'll be guarded in my comments, but I will say that that resident had some, I think, some physical and mental illness that contributed to that problem. He was a hoarder over a number of years. The property was unkempt. He was unable to keep up with the property. And while there was a town taxing on that, the county, their taxes hadn't been paid in years. The county tax bill, I believe, far exceeded our lien for the property not being kept up. But the property was an eyesore. He unfortunately wasn't able to keep up with it. It limits our options in that case. It's not something that we go looking to do. But the neighbors surrounding that property shouldn't have to look at that and live with an eyesore. So we tried to address that. The property owner was not able to do it, was not able to keep up with it, and so the fines just continue to accumulate, unfortunately.
Council member, also, I have the definitive answer now, because I just pulled up the bill, and it's one paragraph, so it's so easy to see. It says, "A person designated as a code inspector may not initiate an investigation of a potential violation of duly enacted code or ordinance by way of anonymous complaint. A person who reports a potential violation must provide his or her name and address to the governing body of the respective Board of County Commissioners before an investigation occurs." There's no prohibition.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you both. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Bob. All right. Oh, thanks.
He's busy anyway.
Vice Mayor, almost skipped you. Sorry about that. You were very quiet down there.
I am. I, my head's spinning. I'm sorry. Steve, I'm directing this at you. Before I get started, I had the opportunity to go to the barn and look at the auction items too. And I will tell you, you and I will be fighting over a couple of items this year again, like we did the belt buckles last year.
All right. Looking forward to it, buddy.
Prepare yourself. Bring your checkbook, whatever you got, you know, hang on. All right?
Looking forward to it.
All right. I'd like to speak about the trailers real quick. I want to thank Tom, personally, for his involvement. He's the one that moves the speed trailers around. I have a list here of where they've been, and I know the next three locations as to where they're gonna end up. Remember, they stay in place for about two weeks at a time. They've been through every north-south cut-through through the town. Volunteer, Dykes, one hundred and seventy-second, one hundred and eighty-fifth, one eighty-sixth, Mathers, one hundred and sixty-sixth in Malaluka. They've been placed there two weeks at a time. So those areas are covered. Midpoint at one hundred and seventy-eighth at the park, Swale, the one hundred and thirty-two block of Luray, out on one hundred and forty-fifth Avenue, which is Thoroughbred. In the middle of Thoroughbred, it's been Rolling Oaks Barn, Hancock Road. So these are the places where this trailer has been, and I hope the residents have seen them out there. The three locations coming up are, one over close to Holatay Trail, somebody requested that, in the sixty-four-hundred block. And the others are that I'll give Tom this evening, out on one hundred and ninety-eighth, about a quarter of a mile in off of Griffin, facing north. And the other one's out on one hundred and eighty-eighth, around the fifty-five-hundred block. That was one that was requested there. I'll be giving this to you in a little bit. So those are the areas. I think the traffic has slowed down. I've noticed a difference on one hundred and sixty-six. They're not running through there at fifty anymore. They've slowed it down to about thirty, thirty-five. So I can almost live with that. But these trailers are there for you to request. Send me an email. Give me a phone call. I'll get the information to Tom, and we'll get these things moved around. Tom, thank you, buddy, for taking care of this. I really appreciate it. Next, we have three council members going to Tallahassee in a week and a half. We're going up there to speak about the issues of town fireworks ordinance being one of the biggest issues up there. Councilman Jabonski, Kazinsky, and I are gonna head up that way and see what we can do. I don't know how much influence you actually have on them, but at least we're talking to them, telling them about our town issues. And we just have to wait and see what happens when this legislation's over. You saw that the Broward County sheriffs, and I'm really happy about this, is starting to crack down on the illegal drifting in the streets and the racing. I saw that on the news today. There was an incident up off of Andrews. The police heard that it was gonna take place. Apparently, they advertise it all over that it's gonna take place. And the police kind of surrounded the area, waiting for them to show up. And when they did, they converged on them. They, I believe, arrested three or four people. They impounded three or four cars, and they confiscated a few weapons, one being an AK-47. Now, for the love of me, I have no idea why someone would be carrying an AK-47 in their car. And lastly, that brings me to the bill that's in Tallahas- And lastly, that brings me to the bill that's in Tallahassee now, and I spoke about it last month. And this bill bothers me a lot, that any person in the state of Florida can carry a weapon without a permit. I mean, I want you to think about that for just one second. No training, no knowledge of how to handle a firearm, no any kind of checks and balances if you're mentally ill, nothing. You just go out and buy a gun. And that scares me because if it gets into the hands, and it will, not of the criminals, but of the honest people who have no knowledge, they take that home and a kid ends up with it. You heard recently that the six-year-old went to school and shot their teacher? How did that kid get hold of that gun? I mean, it's a terrifying thing for an officer to walk up to a car not knowing if that resident or that person has a gun. I know that they appreciate if you're registered and they call it in and you get in a traffic citation, they know that you have a concealed weapon. I imagine they appreciate that a lot more than not knowing that you have one. So that's one of the things that has really bothered me. And I don't see the rationality of it going through, but I've got this feeling that it will. So, you know, all we can do is cross our fingers and hope that, hope that this bill doesn't go through along with several others up there that I've heard over the past week that just, for people to be smart as they are claiming to be, these bills doesn't show it. It's a shame some of the things are coming out of Tallahassee this year. All right? Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Yeah, David?
If I can address one of the issues, Councilmember, Al Britton did say regarding that legislation that you just passed, if it does indeed pass...
You've got to speak right into the microphone or no one can hear you.
Once again, I'm going to go back to my comments. Regarding the issue that you had just spoken about, regarding the firearms issue, just as he was saying, it just occurred to me, we have no protections here in Town Hall or in council chambers. And I was wondering if it would be within the, any guidelines or any requirements or whatever for the town administrator to purchase a metal detector at the entrance of these chambers? I mean, I don't want to do it, but I know that we've had issues with code enforcement hearings where there have been, neighbors have been very, very agitated. And to, if they're now allowed, people are now allowed to conceal, carry without a permit. And, you know, sometimes these get very angry people. Maybe this should be something that we should think about.
David, real quick, I, I'm probably a hundred and ten percent positive that we always have law enforcement here at these meetings.
That's true.
Okay? And that, and I happen to know who they are. And I guarantee you, if someone comes in, you don't have to worry about them engaging, I promise you that, you know? And, you know, we hope that never happens, but I'm not worried about somebody coming here. I'm worried about the accidental deaths that's going to take place with the firearms from people not knowing or not understanding what the firearms are all about. I mean, that's a scary thought for me.
Great. Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm a gun owner myself, so...
Yeah, one question.
All right. Just, most of the ground's been covered, which is awesome. I did want to, we had an issue that came up, I don't know, a meeting or two ago, related to the dangerous dogs and the, kind of the origin of that, why we decided to do our own ordinance. And, and so I knew there was reasons behind it, but frankly, I had not dug into the specifics of it. So since the last meeting, I went ahead and had a conversation with Keith and we talked a little bit about it. And so I wanted to bring that forth so that it was, you know, there was, people could hear why we did what we did. If we, if we, if we don't have the ordinance ourself, there are, as was stated before, there are regulations in state law and even county law that could be applied. We would probably use the state law to do it. But there's a number of issues with that. Issue number one is that if, unless the officer sees it happen, and Keith, please, if I misstate something, please jump in there and correct me. If the officer doesn't see it happen, then we can't bring it forth, which is an issue because very rarely is the officer going to be there when it occurs. It could happen, but it probably, probably won't. If it, if it was brought forth, then we are at the mercy of the state's attorney as to whether it's going to be prosecuted or not. Frankly, they are designed to work with much larger issues, more encompassing issues than a dog bite. And so it's very likely that they will choose not to prosecute it. I believe we could still go forward, but then we could, we would basically be paying for both, probably the prosecution and the defense of it. And so it, it, it's not, it's not really a viable situation. So all of those to say that whereas if we create our own ordinance, then it flows into our normal process where it comes before our magistrate and, and we can handle it as any other code violation. Much less expensive, much more viable to do a prosecution, and the whole issue gets resolved much quicker. Keith, what did I leave out? Is that right? Yeah, Gary?
Yeah, we, you all got a copy, I think, of the police report?
Yeah, yes, yes.
In Roanoke, in Roanoke's, a day ago, we had two loose identified as pit bulls attack a mutt.
Right.
A ten-year-old mutt and mauled it.
But somebody's pet, right? I mean, it was, yeah, somebody's pet.
Went on their property.
It wasn't a wandering dog, yeah.
Yeah. And killed the dog.
Right.
Ultimately, unfortunately.
Right.
And they haven't been able to catch the pit, they haven't, they haven't found the pit bulls, but they've been identified by, somebody knows who they are.
Sure.
And under our ordinance, as I understand it, that we're drafting, they would still be liable for that.
Right.
So that's something, something to consider.
Yep. Thank you. Yeah, so there's, there's, there's a lot of good reasons why this makes sense to have our own ordinance. I apologize, I didn't know them all right up front when the question was asked, but as I said before, I would find out and bring that back, so I wanted to make sure I brought that back. All right. Couple other things, just, Noel, I appreciate what you said. And if we can get that resolution here before the council, I'd appreciate it. And, and then I just wanted to make a, I think I was going to make some comments about CeeLo Farms, but I think I'll, I think we've, we've gone there. What I did want to do is make a comment more generally about code. There's a tendency, and it's not just our code, it's all code, frankly, it's all over the justice system, that, that something terrible will happen and, and, or something bad will be continuing going on if we're talking about code. And what seems to happen is the folks that were originally incurring the issue, that were originally being offended by it, that were originally harmed by it, seem to be forgotten. And all of a sudden, the perpetrator becomes the victim. And I've never bought into that. I think that the original victim should not be forgotten. And, and I think this kind of falls into one of those cases. We didn't, the, any of these ordinances that are on the books, none of them were put in there to be punitive. None of them were put on there to hurt residents. All of them were put on there to protect residents. That's why they're there. And as has been stated many times, if there's an issue and someone is attempting to resolve that issue in a timely manner, the fines will be minimal, if anything. In most cases, there won't be one. It's those situations where, as we've talked about, whether it's overgrown property that destroys the look of a neighborhood, whether it's fill that's being brought in that's destroying the, you know, the flooding of their neighbors, all those other things, you know, all those neighbors that are being harmed by this, they should not be forgotten. They are the reason why these ordinances are in place, to protect them. And so the goal here, as was stated many times, is to get into compliance as quickly as we can, to keep the, the fines down, and frankly, to resolve the situation so that the neighbors around it that are having to deal with it don't have to deal with it anymore. And, and I just don't want that to be lost in this discussion because at the end of the day, that's what it's about. And I would love it, I would honestly and sincerely love it if we went through a whole year and we didn't collect one penny in fines because everything was resolved immediately and without a fine. That would be, that would be Nirvana, that would be the awesome situation. And so that's the goal. And, and, you know, and code is our best, best tool to get us there. Yeah, Gary?
Yeah, I just want to add something to that, that I've been to numerous code hearings now since I have suddenly time on my hands to do that. And, and I've been advising a lot of neighbors who have run into code situations, what to do and all that. But one thing I've noticed, it's, it's virtually across the board, a hundred percent, is somebody who is in violation or about to be in violation or what have you, when they ask for more time, it's always granted.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no, you know, set time.
Yeah.
And it's only when it becomes, when it becomes to the point of being ridiculous that is there a stop time.
Right.
But when somebody needs more time to come into compliance, it's always granted.
Right.
And I have to, I have to admire that. Between the code officials, the legal and, and the special magistrate, they all grant more time. I've noticed that across the board.
Great point.
To come into compliance.
Great point.
So, just something I wanted to point out.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. And, yeah, I think I'm good. All right. Very good. Keith, do you have any comments this evening?
Sure. Mayor, I was in Tallahassee the last day. And I had the opportunity of meeting with our Lieutenant Governor, Jeanette Nunez. Met with the Speaker of the House, I met with the Senate President, I met with the incoming Speaker of the House as well. I said hi to all of our officials, Robin Bartman, Cassell, who's a new representative on our border, and Woodson. And I, you know, I will tell you, the town's in good shape on appropriations and things of that nature. We're not in good shape on the fireworks bill. I've been told by many people that we're going to have to tweak it, and it's something that I will look at in the next week and get back to you all on. There is a major fear that they realize that they've opened up Pandora's Box essentially by their allowing, carte blanche allowing of fireworks. And they're afraid that Wellington Snuck gets built in and that if they grant ours, that there's going to be so many more communities on our heels that's going to try to do the exact same thing.
Maybe they need to fix it then, right?
You would think. So, yeah, I just want to give you guys a heads up, especially whoever's going up there, that it is, as it's currently written, I don't see it passing as it's currently written. And we're going to have to make some modifications to see if we can...
Do you think that's possible to make the modifications? I mean, you...
So I was asked to find out additional ways of essentially allowing it. And I think what they want to see in it is actually a permit process so that, which is essentially what I think Jeff Katem suggested to the Complan Board. And, and so when that came up, they said, "Well, incorporate what you were thinking in your own ordinance and transfer that into state laws so that we can see that people who want to do the fireworks actually can have a process in which they can attain them." And, and that we may be much more open to because then you're not saying straight out denial, which is what they're worried about. And instead, you're saying they can be allowed in these situations. So I promised, and I met with Nelson Diaz following half the meetings, that I would work with you all and him to see if we can do an amendment to the bill. And I promise I'll be working on that next week to email you all.
Keith, is there any, any problem with us working on the three hundred and sixty-two days of the year ordinance?
I will talk, we're looking into that right now, but continue, the Complan Board needs to continue what they're doing because at some point, we're going to find a compromise. So, you know, yes, they need to continue doing what they're doing. There's an argument whether or not we could be preempted on that. I'm going to argue otherwise, but we're working on that issue right now to, to see what the overall thought process is.
Keith, just a quick comment on this. Since the Vice Mayor and two council members are going up next Monday, maybe you can keep feeding them so everybody's on the same page, emails and whatnot.
Absolutely. That's why I wanted just to announce it publicly tonight because it's just found out.
Yeah, and, and, and I, you know, that was always my intention, and I think that was, that was, as far as I know, the council's intention is not to just outlaw it. It was from the very beginning, it was to, we recognize that there's, you know, those are special days and special holidays and patriotic days and that, I don't think that was ever the intention. I think the intention was to give us the latitude to set up some guardrails to where, whether it was certain locations that were, you know, further away from animals or, you know, where everybody could come out. And I frankly think that would be an awesome idea, get, you know, a bunch of folks out there, a little competition going on, you know, but away from the animals. And so some, the ability to put some guardrails around it as opposed to outlawing it completely or having it, as it is now, totally, you know...
So based upon what you said, I have a general question. We have time tonight, so I guess it's a good night to do it. Is to, A, what is the consensus if the town were to designate a town park for such activity to occur? Is that something that you all would be comfortable with?
I'd be in support of that.
Yeah, I would. I mean, to me, you know, the preserve area is, is not a bad place for it. I don't know if that...
It's like Founder's Park.
Yeah, absolutely.
But yes, yeah, I think that's...
Okay. And, and then...
We'd have to, that's what I say, I don't, I should, probably shouldn't say it off the top of my head because it takes some more research to find the right spot. But yeah, I think that would be along the lines, it makes sense.
Broadway. So, and then the second question would be, as long as it's sort of, you know, unanimous on the council to potentially use a permitting process, you know, we would put that in as well. And, and that may give them the comfort level that the chair, I know the mayor actually met with the chair.
Yeah.
I learned that, you know, we had a good conversation, but it...
Yeah, we did. You did. And I brought that up with, with her, to let her know that we're, you know, we're looking for that middle-of-the-road option.
So I will propose it and you all will be able to follow up with feedback next week from being up there. The number one thing publicly to let everyone know that everyone is talking about in Tallahassee now, when you walk into anyone's office, is the Affordable Housing Bill. This bill will have, won't have an impact on Southwest Ranches, but it will have tremendous impact on the rest of the state of Florida. And just so you all understand, I just want to spend one minute to explain why. The bill essentially says that if you have a commercial or industrial property, as long as forty percent is utilized for workforce housing, attainable housing, which is a hundred and twenty percent AMI, it's not a huge number, it's almost market rate in a lot of the state, then you can have maximum density, whatever density you want, and with the maximum height that the municipality has within a mile radius of that site. So the benefit to Southwest Ranches is, our maximum height is thirty-five feet. So as long as the municipality maintains its code, this law will have virtually no impact in the town because a place like Kokina, you know, or whatever our commercial is, would never be able to build to the density that would make it profitable at a thirty-five-foot height limit. So where are developers salivating tonight? It passed the Senate as I was leaving on, they rolled it quickly, they went, second reading, third reading, back-to-back. It went like the quickest bill I've ever seen, unanimous, by the way. Not, not even, you know, both parties voted unanimously in favor of this bill, and it's heading to the House right now. Is every hotel property that you see on the beach will be converted to mass-density residential because they're commercially zoned and they will be able to go up to the maximum height within a mile radius of that location? So some of them, you know, a mile on Fort Lauderdale Beach is La Zoolas. You know, so you can go to the maximum height within a mile, unlimited density as long as forty percent is workforce. Now, of that workforce housing, it's only requiring a thirty-year deed restriction. So they're only doing it on one generational cycle. So this bill flew through the House and Senate. There are cities going bonkers up there. Surfside was up there, Bay Harbor Island, like all these waterfront communities were going absolutely crazy because what they did in their zoning code, it's interesting, if you go to Sunny Isles, they transferred all of their commercial to the west side of A-1A and their residential to the east side of A-1A. to the west side of A1A, and their residential to the east side of A1A, so that they'd have all the oceanfront properties, and then the commercial on the west. This bill now allows all that commercial property to be built as of right to what it looks at on, on the east side, and, and more importantly than that, it's truly an amazing bill. What's even more interesting is they don't have to account for infrastructure, the municipality, or anything else, and it is not allowed to be approved by a city commissioner or a city board, it's administratively approved by zoning staff. It's not allowed to be shown to anyone but zoning staff. This is a, it was, it started out in 93-page bill, it ended up being 100 and something pages. Most people haven't read the entire bill, but it is, it's got some really unique issues in it, and you're going to see massive development as a result of this. But I'm not really worried about the town, because as long as the council keeps that height low, you're not going to have the impact from that bill.
So there's no impact to, there, there's no mitigation for things like traffic? So Fort Lauderdale Beach will be unapproachable, and they're going to have to put in subways to get people in there, or some reasonable, I'm thinking Miami Beach.
Where Surfside was going crazy is, is the mayor, Shloma, I forgot his last name, was up there, room after room that I was jumping to, was saying that they don't have the water and sewer.
Right.
That can handle that additional density.
So the burden will be on the municipalities to build up.
And that, that's what the, the legislators were saying, that's not our problem, that's your problem, you need to plan for the future.
Wow.
So, and, and the reason why it's interesting for the town.
Has anybody ever heard of Home Rule up there?
And, and.
I mean, is that even?
I was going to say, this is.
They voted it out.
This is the first time in Florida history that the Florida Legislature has superseded zoning and land use codes of municipalities. They've totally taken it within their own discretion to dictate what can be built. So literally, my phone has rung 10 times since I was sitting here from mayors from other cities, asking, you know, what, how this is going to impact them, because on the oceanfront cities, it's going to be a, I don't think you'll find another hotel, you know, because the hotels are going to convert to residential, why wouldn't they? They're going to make, you know, 10 times more money, you know, becoming a residential property.
Just like what happened down on the South Beach in the 90s, all those old hotels converted to basically condos.
Yes. So, you know, it's important for you all to hear it now, because it's going to pass in the next day or so in the House. It will take effect on July 1st, the governor's already stated that, so he's going to sign it instantaneously. So, that's it, Mayor. Just wanted you to know, more importantly, that I don't see the impact on the town, but I see tremendous impact on the rest of the state. Yeah.
Wow. All right, thank you, Keith.
Bob, do you want to speak about the meeting that you and I went to with, at Pembroke Pines, the town hall meeting that we attended?
Before.
Go ahead.
I'm sure you have better notes than I have.
Well, I just wanted to mention that the issues that were brought up by the residents to the.
What meeting is this? Why don't you just introduce what the meeting is?
Pembroke Pines had a town hall meeting.
Okay.
Was it five of the state representatives that were there?
Yeah, I, I know the meeting, I was just one of the.
Right, oh, I'm sorry, okay, right. And the residents brought up issue after issue that was going to affect them. Fortunately, a lot of them don't affect Southwest Ranches, because we don't have the density and the population that they have. But some of the issues that came up were just unbelievable. Some of the condo associations, they have to be 100% funded, and that means that the people are going to have to pay a lot of money upfront for any infrastructure to be done, and, and they can't afford it. So they're actually going to be pushed, literally pushed out of their own homes, because they can't afford what's coming in the future. But these are issues like this, one after the other, after the other. There must have been 20 people that asked questions, everyone different, about something that was coming up that was going to adversely affect hundreds of thousands of people. It was crazy, it was just crazy.
Yep, thank you, Jim. Yeah, I'd heard about that.
One other quick comment?
Okay. We are so off our agenda tonight. This is what happens when we get a short agenda.
Yeah. Russell and I attended a meeting that was hosted by Debbie Wasserman, Representative Debbie Wasserman Schultz over at Nova Southeast, and it was about appropriations. And there may be opportunities for us to fund our EOC. This isn't something that happens quickly. If it's, if we're approved for the appropriation, it, it takes a year or two to get it a law, which is right on our timeline.
Yeah, it is.
But at the end of the day, her comment to everybody was, there are a number of appropriations still available, they used to call them earmarks, but it's getting to be more and more of a challenge, because the group in power right now has pulled it out from five different areas that they used to be able to get appropriations in the past. We have to compete for them. This is a perfect job for Emily. She only gets 15 a year, so if, if there's anything we can do to give our cost, and if we don't get it this year, we can, we can keep trying until, you know, we get it. But there's an opportunity there, and another potential funding source if we don't get it from the state.
Good, great. Yeah, thanks. You know, I mean, this is a good example that, you know, the council is active in a lot of different ways, talking to a lot of different, different folks, so. All right, Andy, I think it's finally your turn. Try not to take too much time, okay? Because, I'm just teasing.
You're running a test, Andy.
There it is.
There we go. Yeah, I do have a few things. But thank you, council member, because that's the perfect segue. Lead off with some very good news. As, as you all know, Congressman Debbie Wasserman Schultz had been working on some funding for us, for the Southwest Meadows Drainage Project, and we got official word this week that we have been approved for $600,000 in funding. And so we're expecting the, the agreement from, from the federal government this spring, and we'll get that back in front of you, before you, so that we can say thank you for that money. So, and we will continue to work on other options like that. Want to touch on the speed sign that we, you had, had graciously encouraged staff to go ahead with, that is currently on order. I don't know what the delivery date was. I think Councilmember Jablonsky had asked me that, I need to check on that, but that, that is on order. We do have one coming in. We do look forward to getting that permanent sign up to see how that goes, and that'll work along with the speed trailers. I do have a request for you, I'm looking for consensus to, to spend some money that wasn't budgeted this year, and so I want to tell you what that's about. On the town on 25 acres, as, as you all know, one of the hurdles that we've run into is, is potential wetlands mitigation. And we have reason to believe that the mitigation on that site may have been done back at the time that that West Broward Commercial Park was developed back in the late 80s. And so one of the, one of the firms that we have under, under continuing services contract, Keith and Associates, has the ability to go back into those old files and track that down. And we have a not to exceed from them for $7,925, which if we're able to be successful with this and, and obtain proof that that mitigation was done once upon a time, that'll be some of the best money we've ever invested. So we didn't budget for that this year, but I do want to get council consensus that, that it's in our best interest to spend that money and get that project done.
What was the?
7,925, 7,925. And that's a not to exceed.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be, yeah, I think that's, I think.
I'm okay with that.
Anybody have any issues with that?
No, I have none.
No, go for it.
The 7,900, but if this is from the 80s, it carries forward to now?
If, if the mitigation was done on that site, that's it, it's done.
Okay.
So we have reasonably, when, when Bergeron developed that West Broward Park at the time.
Right.
That, that when all the platting, when the zoning, the land use, et cetera, was all done, we believe that, that the wetlands mitigation might have been done at that time, which would make sense not to go parcel by parcel, lot by lot.
Right.
So when that park was done in total, we have reason to believe that, that mitigation might have been done at that time, and we just need to uncover that. So that's what I'm asking for, that's why I was asking for council consensus, consensus to, to allow us to do that digging.
You got it.
Yeah.
I have a silly question. Does anybody bother to ask Mr. Bergeron if he did, you know, give us a clue?
Have we contacted Ron?
It's all part of the process, yes. And, and yes, that's part of what we'll do as well. But, but if it's been done, I mean, he could tell us, yeah, I did it, but we still got to go back and find that documentation to support it. Yeah.
Yeah, but we, we could at least find out if we're after a dry hole or something.
We, we do not believe so. And that's all I had, but I know Russell wanted to provide an, an update on the LPR project, so if it's okay, Mayor, I'd like to throw it to Russell.
Sure.
Just a quick update. We plan to have 15 locations. We were going to have the LPRs, and I'm happy to say that we have 13 locations that are up and running. We have two locations, one being the 127th Avenue and Griffin Road, where we needed the ILA with Broward County to be completed. That's still pending, we're working through that with Broward County. And the last location is Sheridan and 148. That equipment has been installed, we're waiting on some inspections, and we should have that location up and running by the end of the week, next week. So at that point, we'll have 14 of the 15 locations completed, and the only one that will be pending will be the one on Griffin and 127. There is a slight complication with that location, and I'll be bringing forward, first I wanted to bring it forward to your attention, that we will need to do a change order for that location. On the north side of Griffin Road, there is no electrical conduit running on, alongside the, the north side of Griffin Road. So the thought would be to put a solar-powered LPR system there. But that's still going to require, that's a separate pole, separate camera system than the one that will be on the south side, so that will require an additional cost. So I wanted to bring that to council's attention first, seek your permission to bring forward a change order. You'll have the opportunity to see all of the paperwork, the costs, and everything else like that. The estimate is somewhere between 12,000 to 15,000 dollars for that additional pole and camera system that will be solar-powered, that will run on the north side to catch the cars going eastbound, I'm sorry, westbound on Griffin Road, so.
So are you looking for a consensus tonight, or are you going to bring it back for?
I'd like some consensus before I bring the actual change order back. It won't, we won't do anything, but I, I don't want to process the change order or, you know, go through that, that.
Yeah.
That exercise unless council supports doing that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
You're good. Any, any concerns?
This is, this is volunteer, correct?
No, no, no. The location in question is the one on Griffin and approximately 127th Avenue, where we'll need to have a change order, because we're going to be installing a solar-powered pole.
No problem at all.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we have consensus. Yeah, good. All right.
Mayor, I just have one thing that I totally forgot to tell you.
Yeah, go ahead.
There was a, a law change that requires the municipality to report the projected lease revenue from our cellular tower. It's crazy, but the law changed. Emile is doing what he needs to do to update the financial records. Normally, we have a report that I think comes in when the 23rd, 23rd, it's going to be delayed slightly now, because we have to project that revenue. He and I met on it, and the town is fully complying, there's no issue with filing deadlines or anything, but I just wanted to mention to you that because of a legal change, he has to update the financial projection. If I screwed that up at all, please let them know.
You nailed it.
Is the lease revenue on that variable? I mean, it's long before my time on the council, I don't recall anything to do with it.
It's X amount a year, I think, for the cell tower itself. I, I actually know, I don't think, because I've read it recently. And then every co-locator on it pays a flat rate per month. So as long as those co-locators stay on that tower, the lease revenue is constant. But, and then at some point in the near future, we actually own that tower, which also changes the revenue, because then it's all our revenue. So there's a lot of hurdles he's going through to do the necessary calculation.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, let's move on to approval of minutes, item number 10. We have, all right, I guess we'll just, January, the meeting, regular minutes are January 26 and February 9. Is there any, well, do I have a motion to a second on that?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Is there any additions, corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, if we can please call the roll. Is there, from the public, is there any additions, corrections? Seeing none, if we can please call the roll.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Albritton?
Yes.
Mayor Bryce Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you all, thanks for coming out.